Superintendent Goals. However, depending on how things look toward the end of our board goals, then it will be decided if we should move into the superintendent goals or if we should make the different decision. Okay, so just keep that in mind. So please don't feel like we're rushing to finish those goals in our first item because we want to get to the second one. What's important thing is we focus on the board goals first. Okay, so with you, you should have the proposed school board goals for 2021, your resolution and what else was it? The strategic plan, as I had asked earlier today. So just keep in mind all those documents that we have as we move forward. And then also keep in mind that we're not part of our boards. We are not drafting specific elements of the items that we are addressing on each one of those goals. So for example, if we're talking about community engagement, we are not, we are not adding today elements such as spaghetti dinner with the community. Okay, so we're not going to focus on those little specific elements. We're going to look at it from a broad perspective and then we'll go from there. Okay. Good. And the other thing that I want to clarify too is that those goals that we established today, they're not set on stone. So it doesn't mean that we cannot come back, that we cannot return later. Depends on how things go. If we need to come back in a couple of months and revise or in six months, it all depends on how things go this year. As we know, this is a very unique year and it seems like in 2020, you can expect anything to happen. So just keep that in mind as well. Okay. Okay, so let's start with the board goals. And we're going to have on the screen the proposed goals for this year. So Ms. Funkle, if you could please share that screen. We're going to have it there for us to see and for the public to be able to see it. However, we are not going to keep the document during the remaining of our discussion because it's not, it's not helpful to the, to BEC TV as they're broadcasting this meeting tonight. And it's also, well, we don't want the public to just see the, the document and not see us as we have the discussion. Okay. So if you can take just a look in there for our viewing audience. Very good. So we're going to go first with our first headline here, which is the governance and policy. And there we have two different items. We have the strategic plan and then we have vision. And for strategic plan, we have refresh strategic plan with an emphasis on our safe and supportive schools plan. And as you know, this is, this goes in alignment with our. Hold on, please. I'm looking now for my own document. Yeah, it goes now in alignment with our resolution, the resolution that we just passed last Monday. And so where it says pledges to refresh a strategic plan with an emphasis on our safe and supportive schools plan. So. We're talking about that one. And then we're also talking here on the need to prepare the framework for a process of development and engagement of a new strategic plan on 2021. And it's part of the same item in our resolution. So any discussion about this, any conversation? Anybody have anything to say or everybody's good with that one? Okay, Director Starks.
So I had emailed the chair and the vice chair previously about just a wording question that I had. So the second one where it says, prepare the framework for a process of development and engagement of a new strategic plan in 2021. To me, that almost made it sound like we're doing the new strategic plan in 2021. So we can just rephrase that so that it's, it's clear that we're doing the framework in 2021, but that the new strategic plan comes later. And I don't have the desire to wordsmith that now, but I just think that gets a little confusing the way it's worded.
Yeah, definitely. We can, we can look at that and, and reward that.
Other than that, I think both sound fantastic.
Yeah, yeah, we're definitely looking into the importance of refreshing the strategic plan as we need it now, but then recognizing that we need a bigger process, a different process to really look into the whole strategic plan and any changes that might come or things that we need to revise in the following year. Any other comments on that? Director Sorum.
So to refresh the strategic plan with an emphasis on our safe and supportive schools plans. So we align it with the revolu-, yeah, revolution, oops, I'm sorry, resolution. How specific are we going to get for the goal for 2021? Or is that the goal itself? To refresh the strategic plan with an emphasis? I mean, are we going to come up with some wording that says, you know, takes from the resolution? It takes from the safe and supportive school ideas and meaningful engagement and tailored instruction and some of those types of things? Or is that just going to be our goal? Refresh strategic plan with an emphasis?
Yeah, that is, that would be our first goal, our most immediate and needed goal. And if the board is okay with that, I as the chair will work together with the administration to bring a proposal of the, the language that we'll be using for refreshing.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Director Bennett.
Yeah, to that end on that, that first one, I'm kind of curious on what the process is going to look like. And so I don't know if with the goal presentation when we vote on these on Monday, is the administration going to take that goal and then create action steps to say what the process is going to look like? Like the, the board will engage in feedback from stakeholder groups or the board, I mean, we're going to have those type of things so that we can actually measure that goal and know what the process looks like. I see the superintendent nodding his head, so.
Superintendent, go ahead.
That's exactly right, Director Bennett. We're going to come up with a proposed process for the board to deliberate on and approve. And that process timeline.
Okay, excellent. And then, so I think these are great goals. Another thing that we're going to be heading into next year is right sizing the budget 2.0. So do we need to have that in our goals? Should we, should we do the same process? Should we have a different process? I mean, it'd be nice to have some type of community engagement along the way when we're cutting millions of dollars. It'd be nice to hear from stakeholder groups and.
Well, Director Bennett, if that's okay with you, we'll go over the proposed goals and then we'll come back and add.
Okay, that works.
Need it. And then we'll add other elements, additional elements that we consider necessary for this. But let's just stay to the, to the list for now. Okay?
That's perfect. That was, I didn't know if we're just doing governance and policy. And then we're going to move on to the next area. If we're going to do new goals in this section, so that's fine. We can go through this whole thing and then we'll do that.
Okay. Okay, so we got the strategic plan part, okay? Director Sorum.
Right, so as we've gotten that other sheet before that talks about the board roles, goal statement, board engagement, metrics and six month update, that we've used the document before in the past that we have used, you know, at the beginning, once we set our goals up. Now then we have six month review. Is that correct, Superintendent? That we're going to use a similar format that we've used before where it identifies board goals, statements, board engagement, maybe committees or whatever it is, then the metrics on how we're going to measure it and then get six month updates?
That's correct. That's going to be the process. I'll get that process for going to have it, okay?
Right. Thank you.
Very good. So we're okay with the strategic plan as it is, as part of one of our goals? With both areas, refreshing and then preparing that framework? Good. Okay, then let's move on into that vision part of the governance and policy, which has ensured that the BPS, safe and supportive schools plan, including cultural proficiency are reflected in school board policies, mirrored in budget planning and implementation efforts and supported district wide. So this one, obviously it's aligning with the resolution, the part of the resolution that commits to instituting school board goals and policies, district educational curriculum that reflect the values expressed in this resolution and to reform current policies through an equity lens. So here. Here where we're looking at basically is our commitment in our commitment to the supportive schools, safe and supportive schools plan. Does anybody have any comments on that? Bennett.
Yes, I'm just looking at the, the resolution, how it includes, no, what was it? Curriculum, district-wide curriculum. And we're going to be looking at that, but I don't see that in the, in the goal. So is that something that we should be putting in the goal? And, and again, the process, what does that look like? Or we're going to have like a board committee that's going to be looking at this? Or we're going to be using our, so I don't know. I'd like to have a little more, you know, talk about what that process is going to look like of reviewing policies, reviewing curriculum.
Right. I think the process and for us to know what the process is going to look like will depend of how the process of the safe and supportive school plan goes. Might believe, I don't know, administration?
Take down, please.
Yeah, for the vision, the ensure that, Director Bennett's talking about curriculum and how it is reflected in these, in this goal.
Dr. Mitchler, could you field down, please?
Yeah, so one of the thoughts that comes to mind right away with this one is, you know, we have a, a policy that tells us how we review curriculum. And so, you know, for to back that up a little bit, that question, Director Bennett, I think it, it sort of is pointed out with regard to the piece around school board policies and reviewing the policies, which is where the process for the, the curriculum review is outlined.
So it is already included. It's already implied in the safe and supportive schools plan work.
That's how I see it. And you know, when it, when the curriculum review committees bring forward their recommendations, you know, as Rachel Jen stood, for example, just a couple of weeks ago, that's where we get to see an example of which standards are prioritized and where the board has an opportunity to think through the lens of cultural proficiency as they look through those standards that have been chosen for prioritization. So I, I think it's, I think it's wrapped up in that policy around curriculum review, which provides the process.
And that comes along with community engagement too, because I know you mentioned that, Tom. Maya.
I'm just wondering who, who's involved in, in that as far as, do we have? There's, do we have, you know, somebody, a person on cover? Who do we have that is also reviewing the curriculum?
Dr. Mitchler.
Yeah, that's a good question. It's outlined in the policy, I think, a little bit of who is represented there. But, you know, I think it's an example, Director Olson, of something that we, we'd want to think about as we look at the policies and we do the reviews is, you know, keeping in mind if a value of cultural proficiency in our work there is that we have representation from lots of different groups, then that would be something we consider as we look at the policy.
Thank you. Director Paga.
I just wanted to add along with that, usually when they come for the presentation, in the presentation, they tell you who was involved in the different work groups and, and who the teachers were and who the staff were. And so we always have a chance to see all the people that were involved in that review before it comes to the board. It's usually outlined in the presentation.
Sorum.
Right, and the word vision, now in our strategic plan, we also have a vision of what we intend to create. How are those two different? In the terms of the vision of the strategic plan, where we create pathways to college and career and each learner has a personal growth plan? In the strategic plan, as we refresh, are we going to change some of that to pick up the vision that we're expecting from safe and supportive schools plan?
Superintendent.
To look at the strategic plan and recommend changes to the vision section to the board to reflect and recognize the safe and supportive schools plan.
Okay. A little work off each other. Yep. Thank you.
Director Olson.
One more question. I'm wondering too, you know, the teachers who are actually going to teach the curriculum, is there somebody to represent each grade depending on the grade the curriculum's designed for? A, a teacher who's going to be teaching to represent?
Yes. I don't know if every single one is, but usually they're, they have like, when they're reviewing the health curriculum, I think people that are involved in that subject are part of it. I don't know, maybe Dr. Mitchler can answer that better, but what I've seen is yes.
Yeah, yeah. And again, I think this is an example of something that you would, you would discuss as you start to take up the policies, each one of those. If you remember, I had a list of policies that we could consider with safe and supportive schools work. And so curriculum review is one of those policies. And so again, I don't know the direct, the exact wording that's in that policy. I can look it up. But, um, you know, I think what we're, what you'd be saying here is that you're committed to looking at each of those policies and thinking through the lens of cultural proficiency. So looking for some of the things that you're, you're talking about, Director Olson.
That's correct, yeah. So what we're doing here is staying with the goals and saying what it is that we would like to accomplish. And then the plan is here and the plan will be developed. And as it develops, then we will have more questions, of course, and we will gain more information and then there will be more inclusion community numbers. Yes. Director Starks.
So in the, this one, the policies makes sense to me and the budget makes sense to me. But can we maybe define or discuss what supported district wide means in that phrasing?
Superintendent, would you like to explain that part?
I need help from Dr. Mitchler, please.
Yeah, so you're talking about, and I see it as connected to the implementation efforts piece too, right? So that you're looking at what's happening across the district and ensuring that the policies are being carried out in the way that they were intended to be. And so I think of, you know, an example, I think that would be, I see some of the board members, not now, of course, but back in the day when we could be in buildings, right? Wandering around the buildings and talking to people and just really trying to find out, are we, are we carrying out board policy in the way that we would, you would be hoping that, that folks would? And so that's what I, that's what I read when I see that language. And I think others could probably interpret it differently too, but that's one interpretation that I would have.
Well, oh. Does that respond to your question?
Well, not, because that's, I think, where I get concerned is when there's potential for multiple interpretations of something in the goals that we should maybe define so that it doesn't, you know, like one department or one sections thinks, well, we're doing this way and one section's doing this way. And, and I don't feel the need to get into the weeds about what it means. I'm just trying to figure out how, how and when we will define what that means. I also, I'm a huge fan of Oxford, Oxford commas. So to me, when I read this, I read mirrored in budget planning and implementation. I thought budget and implementation were together and supported district wide weren't. But I think you're saying that it was the opposite, that it's implementation and supported were together. So maybe it's just the phrasing that threw me off too, which is possible. But I think anywhere where we can, where we can make it pretty clear as to what we are, what we mean by the goal versus an interpretation of the goal, to me is a little bit stronger.
Yeah, yeah, we can definitely change that last one or, or add it so that it reads differently for interpretation. Superintendent. You got your microphone out, I think? Yes.
The plan is hope is to hopefully take this for board action on Monday night. So if edits are going to be made like this, like defining, clarifying definitions and wording, how should we process this change with the board? So we don't take time on Monday night going and deliberating, wordsmithing language? Any suggestions?
Does anybody have any suggestions?
Well, I can come up with something and share with the board and hopefully I can distill everything back and send it out again. It's just, I don't want to move to a zero mean, but I can try to do that and help move things along.
Yeah, if we have changes in the wording then, or if we have any additions, if you could please then just send it to us and then we will get back to you for any additional comments. But please do that over the weekend. What is tomorrow? Tomorrow is Friday. So maybe, it depends on how soon Superintendent sends it, but please do it as, as soon as possible.
And everyone, if you see, I'm trying to add in red font, note taking. So if I'm not capturing your questions or please let me know. Then I'll go back and deliver the right thing. Okay?
Okay. Tom Bennett.
Oh, yeah, well, I think with this one here, what Heather brought up, I think that's a, because that's kind of, it's kind of multiple meanings at the end. So maybe just cleaning up that language isn't changing the essence of the, the goal. If you just change it to like, you know, with implementing, you know, implementing with fidelity throughout the district or something like that so that it's a little clearer, I think that's fine. You can do that and doesn't need board approval unless you're like changing the essence of the goal.
Yeah.
But just wordsmithing, you know, so it makes sense, it's fine. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Sorum.
Sure. And the way I read it was are reflected in school board policies, one. Two, mirrored in budget planning. Three, implementation efforts. Four, supported district wide. For the suggestions.
Yeah, maybe it was a matter of that comma. Okay. Yes, Director Bibi.
Microphone, microphone.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. You know, when it gets to that, that listing, are reflected in school board policies, mirrored in budget planning, implementation efforts to be supported district wide? Does that, does that say it?
What do you mean?
I'm just changing the wording and all of a sudden my screen has gone crazy. Did everybody else's screen go crazy?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think she's saying she's suggesting language there to fix it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I, I think we got that right, Superintendent, maybe? Okay, perfect. Then I'll take another look at that once the Superintendent sends it to us, please. Okay. All right, so are we good there with the vision part of this? Good. So let's move on to operational oversight where we have accountability first and says, review multiple measures for academic and safe and supportive schools. Any comments on that? As we are implementing the, implementing the safe and supportive schools plan, we're going to look into reviewing a measure, measures. It's a hard work for me. Yes, Director Bibi?
I think we need to ask, ask ourselves in this, for what reason? I think that it need, the purpose for that needs to be put into the goal.
Okay, Superintendent.
In the past, our goals are now myso metrics related to the strategic plan. Were largely academic metrics. MCA scores, MAP scores, things like that. We, in the past, have set goals to set some kind of safe supportive schools metric or SCL metric. And at one time we looked at attendance. Dr. Mitchler's talked about doing a deeper discussion to see if there are other metrics that can help guide us to develop safe and supportive schools. So that's why we added that piece. Does that answer your question, Director Bibi?
Well, I'd like to, I, I guess I'm trying to, when we were at an MSBA meeting this morning, we were talking about the goals and they said, a goal that starts with review isn't really a goal. There needs to be some kind of like a purpose with it.
Oh.
For the purpose of, of, of measuring safe and supportive schools, we will be looking into and reviewing multiple measures.
Director Cor- Cor- Corman? If you recall, I shared before that every student succeeds act, the federal act required all states to come up with five accountability indicators. Four were academic and one was a non-academic indicator. Our state has chosen to pick up attendance as a non-academic indicator. That's why we picked that one up. And then we started to talk about see supportive schools. There, there should be something stronger or deeper than attendance. So we can put that in as the reason why we're doing this. How about that, Director Bibi? Okay? Or, yeah, with not that many words, but something shorter.
Yes, that would be helpful.
Great. Director Stark.
Yeah, or as you just mentioned, something like you're reviewing them for their validity.
Right.
And then developing new, right? As Dr. Mitchler was, you know, like maybe finding new. So I agree with, with Beth's. Yeah, defining it is awesome. And I think that that's, yep.
Okay.
Right. Okay, anybody else on that one? Accountability on that specific one, specific goal? More code? Then the 2021 school planning, review periodic reports on our district's compliance with MDH and MDE health and education guidelines. Comments? And of course, is what is taking the bigger, the bigger space during this year seems to be the, the COVID-19 situation. It makes sense that we will have to, of course, if we're planning for school, we have to constantly review those, those different reports and report to the, to the school board as well. Okay. Director Sorum.
Sure, and I kind of, going back to the accountability. Yeah, when we have come up with goals, there is always an action word to get it going. You know, like instead of just review, you know, enhance multiple measures for academic. And the same with this and review periodic reports on our district compliance. And I don't know what would be a good action word for reviewing the periodic reports, but accepting periodic reports in a sense and reflecting on how it is all going would be, would be a good one. But just some action words in the goal to make sure that we, that we're going to be doing something rather than just review. But I had another question going back to governance and policy. The parenthetical expressions aligns with resolution. Is that going to be in our goal? Or is that just information that these do align with the resolution?
Those are just, sure, Corman, that's, those are just on the notes.
Just the notes, yeah, because I was going to say it doesn't reference the resolution as we're, we're speaking, but okay, thank you.
Correct, yeah. Any other comments on this 2021 school planning? Yes, Director Bibi?
Yeah, just as Jim said, to look at what is the purpose of reviewing? Would it be requesting periodic reports on our district's compliance with MDH and MDE health and education guidelines to assure a physically safe and academically approved guidelines in light of COVID this year?
Anyone else? Bennett.
Yeah, I like what, what Beth said there. I mean, it might, maybe we put it something in there like in, in coordination with administration, the board will review period, or reports and then the joint decision-making process of how to continue with school planning. Maybe something along those lines, just so it's more spelled out.
Good. Thank you. Okay, so we're good there with those comments, the notes on changes. Very good. So let's move on to community engagement. So we had advocacy and engagement. Implement representative model in stakeholder groups. To implement our presented model in stakeholder groups. Hold on, let me look at my notes here. Yeah, first we have advocacy and engagement and then we have to implement a presented, implement our presented model in stakeholder groups. And then we have as a board, we will modeling words and actions to school environment that promotes respect for and curiosity about our cultures, affirms the equal humanity of our members of the community, and rejects all forms and bullying and discrimination. And then we have participation in professional development regarding equity and access foundational to save and supported schools. So yes, Director Bennett.
Yes, I'm kind of wondering that statement, implement representative model in stakeholder groups. What is that? What exactly does that mean? I don't know if Jenna or Les can speak to that.
Jenna, Dr. Mitchler, please.
Yeah, and I see Rick Kaufman is here with us too tonight. When we first were starting to look through the MSBA standards for school boards and their responsibilities and roles, the role around communication and engagement was one that we had thought paired well with the safe and supportive schools work. And, you know, we were reflecting a little bit on there. There are places where school board members are representatives. So for example, within the, within the parent advisory committee pack at the district level or PTSA is another example of that. I think Director Soren knew, I saw you most recently at a PTA, PTSA meeting. And so to, I guess the idea here would be to implement a representative model, being represented, represented at each of these various committees or groups, and then able to communicate what takes place in those meetings back with the board. And then maybe, I don't know if Rick Kaufman, if you have things to add as well. I know we had talked about this together a little bit.
Yeah, in addition to those, the groups that you talk, it's also board members are asked very different schools and such when you're visiting or participating in school events and activities, you have an opportunity to, as where your school board had to engage with parents and students and staff members and others. I mean, you all reflect that each, each time the school board meets by listening to those constituencies across the district, but particularly for your school. So all that is reflected in your communication efforts that you bring to the table, that enlighten you, but also educate others in forms of
Okay, because what I ask is because I think it's important that we make a concerted effort, be it the board of the district, to reach out to those voices that historically haven't been listened to before. So yes, it's great, the PTSA, yes, the PTs are great. But we hear from those guys all the time and we appreciate their, their input, but you know, I really want to hear from Somali Parent Network and the Latino Parent Association. Or if those associations aren't working, then are we looking to create maybe a BIPOC parent group or BIPOC student group or affinity groups, as Nellie was talking about with our staff, the staff members of color. And we're hearing from those voices as well, that we're not just continuing to hear from the same voices year after year. So I don't know, you can reflect that somewhere in our goals. That would be awesome.
Like specific items, action items is what you're talking about, Director Bennett?
Yeah, well, just that we're gonna listen or reach out to stakeholder groups that historically have not been at the table for decision-making process. Something along those lines, I think would be great.
Yeah, to all different groups, which will include not only parents, but our community members, but also our students and our teachers or staff member.
Yes. And then like on maybe under action steps, they could list them out separately, but I just want to make sure that's something that we're not, we're not missing. And then we say, oh, we're getting community engagement work. We're listening to the PTSA and PTAs and we're not engaging in that unheard of voice, or that not listened to voice that's in our district.
Right. Okay, Director Olson.
Yeah, I like what Director Bennett is saying. I also was thinking that it would be really nice if we could all together hear, hear some voices, some community voices as I know, I know that nobody ever listens to the end of our meetings when we talk about, you know, our own board reports, but I had put, so I'm just going to repeat that, you know, that I heard Peggy Flanagan say, you know, as a former school board member that it's always been the school board's task to, to present the district to the community and that we need to think more about representing or having the community represent to the district. And, or for the school board to help the community represent to the district. So I was thinking about it and I'm wondering if we could have any kind of panel type, type discussion that would be, that would have somebody who would, you know, somebody professional who would operate it or facilitate it, I should say. Where, you know, there would only be, you know, maybe they would submit questions ahead of time and then, and then or, you know, where they write them down, how you see them, like when we do the school board. What do you call it? With the Women League of Voters, where people write down questions and they pick out questions to ask. And the community could have the whole board there, or maybe it could just be a listening session where we're just listening. That's it. And, and then they could fill out a form if they want us to follow up with any, you know, emails or phone calls or anything, but it would be really nice if we could all be together to hear some voices.
Yeah, yeah, good point, Director Olson. And, you know, this, this goal is very it's, it's very specific about how we will be implementing or making sure that there are different models that will allow for stakeholders to participate and so, and for the board to listen. And, and so we're talking about the safe and supportive schools plan to, remember once again that there is that, that, that community engagement item as well that we will be also working on. So all those different things along with that, remember also that we have a committee that is a community engagement committee of the board. So all those particular things can be addressed to that community, committee. Okay, and maybe Director Stegaf can speak on that too, if you want to. Director Starks.
So I just wanted to throw out a phrase that is used in family engagements that I think is really a good one here that you can frame things is no decisions about us without us. So if we think in that framing that as long as you're not making decisions about someone without involving them in the decision-making, we could use that as a framework too. And for the record, PTA is awesome. Thank you, Director Bennett.
Yeah, Director Stegaf.
I just had to give make a comment of Heather Starks that I think that the family engagement maybe took that from the disability community because that's been talked about the disability for about the last 40 years already, so.
It's a good one. I mean, it really, I think it's a great lens to look through. So wherever it came from, it's amazing.
Well, and I think definitely that the purpose and the intention of the school board needs to be to find new ways or pick up on the old ways as well of community, doing community engagement, you know? Like you have mentioned, listening to the voices of all our parents and it's all, all of our parents. Everyone needs to be represented. Our students need to be represented through our parent groups as well. And so that is important as well as listening to our students, you know, they're the people that we are doing this work for. So this is very important to listen to their voices and recognize those voices as well. So yeah, looking into different models, what are we going to do and how can we do this as we move forward? And obviously this is not just something that we're going to do in the next six months, because six months is not enough. But it's something that, you know, we're committing to looking into different and new ways of engaging and that we will continue to implement the following year. And Dr. Mitchler is going to help us with that because she's got great ideas. Right? And yeah, that, those, those different groups, you know, to, to recover the, that connection that we had a few years ago with other groups of parents, that is important as well as somebody mentioned the affinity groups, that's, that's also very important, you know, especially during this time that people start connecting with each other and supporting each other always is, it's very important. Director Bibi.
Yeah, that is exactly what I was talking with Dr. Mitchler today about. You know, one of the things that in looking at our, our families, our families of color is many of them have large numbers of children and it's been hard to get some of them to be able to be a part of some of like the parent advisory boards and childcare may actually be an issue. And some of them, their husbands may not get home in time for a seven o'clock meeting or, or definitely a six o'clock meeting. But even as we've been doing these, you know, online, like Google Outlook or Zoom calls, the thought is what if we could do something like that and a parent could still be in their home, perhaps in the bedroom? So the children could be with an older child, but they would be available if there was an emergency. And that way they could feel like, oh, I can still contribute or I can still be a part of this, but I won't have to race off to another location, leave my children, arrange childcare. Because many of them have, you know, four to six or even eight children. But we want to hear those voices specifically. And that may release things. I know it's been a lot easier for me to do these meetings with, you know, just being right at home. There's advantages and disadvantages, but it would be better to have their voices, even if it's by that way. Then not see them at meetings. And I know that, that Gina Miller was making some inroads to the Somali community by going to the mosque and they were doing some sewing project or something. And that was getting them together and getting them to talk about things. So we do have to be creative in reaching those families of color.
Yeah, yeah. And remember, please remember that engagement doesn't only mean when the person is present in a specific location, but there's many different ways of engagement. And it's something that we will, you know, look at again, once we're going through, through those different models, whichever they are. And that will, will be bringing back to the board, of course, for different or deeper conversations. And of course, we have, once again, we have our committee that are community engagement committee of the board that I'm sure will be looking into all those and, and bringing recommendations to the board as well. Correct? Okay. All right.
Don't forget, don't forget me, Chair Corman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's okay. I'm easily, easily forgotten.
Forget.
One of the things that we've done in the past and it kind of goes along with Director Olson was we have had town hall meetings at various times on various topics where there's just been two maybe board members that go there, not the whole group, but just rotating at different spots where we have, and Dawn I know has been involved in some of these too. But we have had varied responses whenever we put out that advertise this type of a thing. We've had maybe five or six people to maybe 10 people. And then, of course, when we want to keep it to a particular subject matter with a particular constituency, that seems to be more effective than just saying, hey, we're going to have a town hall meeting this, this Saturday and the school board members will be there to talk about anything you want to know about. Well, wow, that gets into a real can of worms, especially with budgets and curriculum instructions, so forth like that. But at least that's another opportunity that we can offer ourselves to the public in a different format for some kind of engagement.
Okay, thank you, Director Soren. Okay, any comments in regards to the, the following item under community engagement? It says as a board, we will model in words and actions to school environment that promotes respect for and curiosity about our cultures, affirms the equal humanity of our members of the community, rejects all forms of bullying and discrimination.
I had a question about the wording under advocacy and engagement, because at first it, it Director Bennett was talking about, you know, what does that mean? And, and we haven't really come up with the wording for that. And because when I read it, actually, I thought that you were looking for representatives on the stakeholder groups from the community, that we needed to have that. So that, that board members will be representatives in stakeholder groups.
Well, obviously the advocacy groups are part of this community engagement plan. You know, we have our different, our different groups and it is very important to purposely and intentionally continue to find the people or to invite people that can be representing our community in, in the groups that we have in the committees, the committees of the board. So I think that's, that's one thing we're need, we need to work harder, purposely work on how are we going to invite or find or open up those opportunities or advertise would be a better word. How do we advertise it and how do we find the people that can be part of those different groups? Yes, Mr. Kaufman.
Director, I want to respond on that. You're absolutely correct. Advocacy and engagement and the work of those different stakeholder groups, the more we become, the more board members become involved in reaching out to various different constituencies within the community, you make, create relationships to be able to identify people that may be interested in serving on these various different stakeholder groups. Mr. Bennett, Director Bennett brought up a great point. PTSA is a longstanding parent advocacy and advisory group. It has very little BIPOC representation over the years. And so we have, what, 48% of our population is a person BIPOC? We should be having at least more than the one or two people that we typically have on PTSA council. That just gives you an example.
Yeah, and finding ways to provide those type of opportunities to people who have not been involved in the past as well. Because sometimes you'll find the same people are in all different groups, but we actually need to expand that, the spaces, the, the, the voices that we have. So it is very important. We still don't have enough people of color in our committees, unfortunately.
It could be on just an ask. It really is. And you know, we already will tell you is having a trusted relationship, building that relationship to the point where you become a source of information for that individual, as opposed to saying we would like for you to serve on the PTSA council, when they probably have no idea what the PTSA council is, what they're asking, what they're so all of that is a, of a trusted relationship that board members and others need to do is part of this particular goal of community engagement.
Right, yeah, correct. Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Director Olson.
Yeah, I was going to just say that I remember learning a long, long time ago that, you know, one of the reasons it had to do with volunteers. I, I was thinking that we need more representation with parent volunteers. You know, a long time ago volunteering myself. And so I had heard that one of the issues is that a lot of people have had a very bad experience in their own lives in the school system when they were younger. So they're not real comfortable coming into the school system to volunteer or to be part of a committee. So, so like Director Kaufman said, developing the relationship outside of the school is, is a good way to go.
Correct. Okay, Director Stegaf.
I just wanted to add to that, 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 that. I, I just wanted to add to that, 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 that I think that I agree with Director Olson. That's very true. But I think it goes beyond just bad experience. It may be that where you spent your time in school or youth, that, that piece of parental involvement was not something that that school did. And so you also don't, you maybe don't even understand what that looks like if you've never experienced it or your parents never did it. So it's not even just a bad experience. It's just not even understanding the things that you can be involved in and what it looks like and, and, and how that works in our school district.
Correct. Director Olson?
Yeah, I, I totally agree with that too. And, and also, it's a good point. Also, I was, I've been thinking, and I might have brought this up before, I don't remember, but having an outreach person at each school, you know, a parent who, who volunteers to be an outreach person to contact, you know, new family members or, or just family members to see, hey, you know, are you interested in joining us for this volunteer opportunity or the various, you know, just a, a community outreach person right there in the school?
Right. And in, in the past, when those groups had started, it was the Office of Educational Equity, one of their members who made the direct contact with the parents from many different schools. Yeah, but it's something that we, we, for example, in the case of the, the Latino Parent Association, I know that most of the parents left the district because their kids graduated. And so they didn't have any more kids in there, so they didn't, didn't come back, they didn't return. And so now, okay, how do we, how do we go back and rescue and, and re-initiate those groups? So that they can participate again. So I think that is, that is important. And maybe that's something for, for the community engagement committee to take a look at. You know, what, what does it mean for the board now when we talk about outreach, when we talk advocacy? What does it mean now when we talk about engagement? You know, maybe start redefining those things and what it means now that we're doing the safe and supportive schools plan under that lens, once again. Director Sagan?
I just wanted to add, as we're talking about this and talking about increasing volunteer and stuff, I, I don't want us to forget that we have wonderful volunteers already. And that our district is, is very blessed that we have people that are always stepping up and, and looking to help and are committing, you know, so many unpaid hours that, that already to our children. So I don't want us to sound like, you know, we're disregarding all of the work those people are already doing also.
Yeah, so it's a lot of good people doing a lot of good things. Yeah, definitely. Director Bibi?
Really good discussion. Really appreciate this. All the ideas are so good. I was thinking kind of what we're talking about and, and this in response to Rick to find a word is that in our ambassadorships to our schools and community to recruit more BIPOC families, to create relationships and in order to engage parents outs, outside of school. Now I'm, I jumped here. To recruit more BIPOC families to create relationships for potential representatives on school groups, stakeholder groups.
Yes, very good. So let's take us also to the next, the next item here, which is, once again, as a board, and I want to read again just to make sure that we have that clear. As a board, we would model in words and actions, a school environment that promotes respect for and curiosity about all cultures, affirms the equal humanity of all members of the community and rejects all forms of bullying and discrimination. So basically here, what we're doing is making a commitment that we're also part of this, of this work, that we're also, that we're gonna model this work and that we're gonna educate ourselves as well. Because that means also, you know, if we're serving different families that come from different backgrounds and cultures and experiences in life, that we are also educating ourselves, you know? We're also making that commitment, that understanding who we are working with. That is very important because we cannot just look through, through one, one own's lens. You have to look into what are the experiences of the other person and to take those into consideration when you are making an impact on those, and changes on those policies, for example, and, and the, the different decisions that we're making. And that also takes us to the next one, which is the professional development. Professional development is part of that commitment. We are, we continue to, to work together with Dr. Mitchler. And then, you know, exploring all this, the great book that you gave to us, that Mr. Sorum already read it all and he's wanting a new one. The book number two. He's got it there and he's gonna show us his book. There you go. And now Director Bennett has it too. So everybody's doing the work. We're reading, we're educating ourselves. That's the commitment we're making. We're, yeah, there you go. Director Olson too. Okay, Director Sagan?
So I just have a, a question, which, and this may not be where this goes, but I almost, I like this, the second paragraph almost more as a mission statement than a goal. You know, I would love to see this like just at the top of our goals. Partly because I don't think you can measure this. I think this is just who we are. And so if there's a way that we could move it out of the goals, but put it somewhere prominent, I'd, I'd really like to explore that.
Yeah, that's a good idea. The only thing is that this has a direct relationship with community engagement. That will be the only thing that I see if we take it away from there. Yes, Director Bennett? Let, let's talk about...
I was thinking the same thing. I mean, how, how do we measure that? It's a great statement, but how are we measuring that? So I don't know if, if administration is gonna provide different action steps. The board will this, the board will that, so that we can actually measure this goal? Or otherwise, it's just a statement. It's not measurable? If that makes sense?
Yes.
True. Okay, Director Bibi?
I was also looking at it and where it says promotes respect for and curiosity about all cultures. In order to be aware, we have to be students of that culture. But how are we gonna do that? Because when Dina and Shanna came forward with the equity plan, I asked about that. Are we going to get some, you know, common things to know about some of our students that are represented in our community? And, you know, what are family structures like? You know, what is their, what are their holidays, beyond holidays? But what are those traditions that speak loudly in their community as rites of passage? And, you know, there's a lot I don't know about the Somali community. I try to learn. And when I'm around them, I always ask a lot of questions. But in order for us to respect, we also will need to know more. And so I was wondering about tying that in with professional development. We can talk about equity, but we also need to know information. As you go into a culture and you want to connect with that culture, you have to find out what is important to them. Because what's important in my culture may not be important to them. You know, sometimes in some cultures, the time factor is a totally different concept than others. You know, sometimes what they consider the school's responsibility and what I consider the school's responsibility are two different things. Or what we think the parent's responsibility is and what they think it is are definitely conflicting. So we have to be aware of that, but I don't know enough. I'm wondering if that's something that our cultural liaison or other people gifted in those areas of, of teaching about those cultures can give to us in some professional development to make us wiser in our relationships in order to not offend and to respect.
Yeah, that, that's a good point too. And I'm sure that our equity specialists would probably have a good list of resources that they can share with us. I also have some resources that I can, I can share with the board. But if, you know, Dr. Mitchler, maybe if, if you could find that out for us. If the Office of Educational Equity happens to have any good resources or things that they would suggest that we, that we either read or, you know, I know that there's like good videos as well or, or documents, you know, series and things like that, that we can, that we can, that we can look at, that would be good, you know, on our own time. You know, and then we make that commitment too, because that's, that, that will be on your own, you know? Yes, and Dr. Mitchler?
Yeah, I can certainly do that. I just wanted to add also that I see why this is a piece of the community engagement section of your goals. Because I think there's something very important about, you know, learning from every individual we come in contact with and that being an opportunity for, for learning and growth too. And then I would just add, you know, I remember when we talked about this at the board session, when we talked through the, the next three-year equity plan and the importance of learning about our own cultures, right? And I remember saying, I gave the example of, I used to, when I was younger, I'll admit, I at times thought, I don't have culture, right? I'm, I'm just normal. It's other people who have culture, right? And so to finally come into my own and recognize through my own journey that we all have culture. And there are some very foundational things about me that are my culture is important too. And so I think that's the, that's the, the journey we're embarking on together is learning about our own cultures a little bit more and, and finding ways we can engage with community to continue learning about others and being open to others too. So, thanks.
And, and that is very important that you mentioned that, Dr. Mitchler, because a big, a huge component of the safe and, and supportive schools plan is the cultural proficiency. And when we're talking about culture, you know, once again, remembering that we're talking about all cultures, including your culture, you know, including my culture. So acknowledging that, you know, you have a specific experience as Beth, for example, or as Dawn, right? Superintendent Fujitaki, for example. And then I have my very own and it's all different, but they're all valid. And we need to make sure that our students are also learning on that whole variety, you know, getting to know more about it so that we can, by understanding, we, we get to, to, to more tolerance and, and, you know, empathy and development of different elements that we need in order to, to have effective relationships. I saw somebody raising hand. Director Sorum, I will never forget about you.
My microphone, there it is. Well, that is interesting, you know, that respect for and curiosity about all cultures, reading through some of the policies, like I'm sure Director Olson has done and Director Bennett have done. You know, there are, in that cultural development and all of the plans that we have, that we work through, it's really, some of those words are, are in those policies also. But I think as we go through the policies, a couple of them, we haven't done since 2018, 2019, where, where it does talk about instructional materials that, that we're gonna be getting into. So now that the time is, and we've done this resolution and the timing on it is that all of a sudden, we're gonna have to really be more aware of it. And I know with Dr. Mitchler, the tailored instruction, learning opportunities that utilize universal design and are personalized for students, staff and the community. So I think all of this stuff together and as a board, we will model, that's a significant statement as part of community engagement. And, and like was mentioned before, how do we measure and how are we going to evaluate as we go through every six months and to try to do some of these things? We're entering into a different thing and I can say that from my past experience with, with doing all of these things, that we are entering into a different world. And it's gonna be interesting how we do that and how we respond to all the different needs and interests of the learners. But the policies, policies are big and they're gonna have to be gone over well. Right, Mr. Bennett?
Well, and that, that's another question that, or something else that we, we need to talk about as we're looking at this today is when it comes to policies, we have a policy committee of the board. But then how, if, if we're owning this as a board, as a school board, how are we gonna approach those policies? Is it that the entire board gonna be approaching this? Is it only the, the committee? Because the committee has a specific job and it's not related to this, that is different. And so any thoughts on that? Director Bennett?
Well, our focus from the policy committee is, would be on this. It's whatever our goals dictate them to be. In the past, the goal has been review 20 policies. So that's what we did. But if we're saying, okay, review these policies through a lens of equity, then that's the emphasis I would put on that. So I think it still is a, a policy committee and probably in the, in their, the wheelhouse of the policy committee, I would think.
Anyone else? Director Bibi?
I think it's important for all of us to be able to look at things from the perspective of, perspective of equity. Because if this is a board responsibility, and it is different actually from, you know, updating the policies, which is what the policy committee does. This one, I think we need more voices and we need more input. We need more opportunity to discuss in order to own it. You know, I, you know, I agree with a lot of things in the resolution, but that was done by other people and then we had to claim that. I'd like to see us have opportunity to discuss it among each other.
Director, Director Sagan?
I would prefer it stays within the policy committee. I think that they can discuss it. They can show us the changes that they're making. It would be helpful when we get them though, if there are updates that we see them like the old version and then read for the update or something so we can distinguish them. And then we could, you could contact anybody on the policy committee and say, how did you get to this? Whatever, when, because we get the packet to review them before. And then you could have that conversation. I guess you should say the chair of the policy committee to say, how did you get to that point? And then we still have the option, we have done it in the past, where when it came to the board table, we still have that discussion. And there have been times we've sent it back to the policy committee and said, no, we think that it should say this. So that could still happen. Just because the policy committee reviews it and brings it to the board doesn't mean that we're gonna always agree with them every single time.
Director starts? Were you gonna say something? No? Director Olson? Do you have an opinion on that?
Me?
Yes, you?
I didn't have my head up. I said, Tom. I mean, I, I think it showed in our previous meeting that this is a continuation of that the, it, it showed a list of the policies that the board is going to review. It's a policy committee. It's of the board. So I think that we all need to take part.
Director Starks?
Okay, I am gonna have an opinion. Sorry, Mr. Bennett. I, so one thing, a conversation that came up in the last policy committee, which might affect this or be, is when we talked about potentially having a high level like review, so every policy that comes forward, we would potentially have like a description of what changed and have the red line and the regular next to each other for that same reason. Because I was saying, it's hard when you haven't seen it or haven't been at that discussion to see exactly what changed. So that was a conversation we've already had that we talked about in the policy committee about bringing forward to the board. So that's part one. And part two, I feel like this is very similar to the conversation we had about school start times, where we were like, well, is the whole board gonna do it or is a policy, or is a committee gonna do it? And we talked about how unwieldy it can get when you're trying to have seven people that are trying to change wording or, you know, whatnot. So I think that starting it in the policy committee and, and at least letting that group jumpstart... jumpstart the conversation, but then bringing the information to the group that then they can see where that conversation started and ended, if that makes sense?
Yeah.
So even though you weren't there, you probably can follow what happened and then, and then it can come to the board. But I think it needs to start in the policy committee first.
So that you can, yeah, then you can give recommendations to the rest of the board ahead of time and then the rest of the board can provide the input that's needed before the meeting. Okay, good. All right, so.
Wait, wait, wait. Okay. I want to hear from Mr. Bennett. Yeah, Mr. Bennett was going to say something.
Well, I didn't raise my hand, because I thought we were going with the only calling on people who don't raise their hands style, but anyway. But I'll just go my inner Jim Storm and give a historical perspective of the policy committee. The whole reason we started the policy committee was because before we had that, we were doing it at the board table and it takes a lot, lot of time. So if you guys want to do that, that's fine, but first thing we do is change our policy that ends meetings at 10:30, because we will not be ending meetings at 10:30. We will be there till midnight or later, going over the minutia of words of in policy. So I think it should start in the policy committee and it has to be passed by the board. The policy committee doesn't pass anything. We just agree to it and take it to the board. If the whole board has any, any issues with it, we could either make the changes then at the board table or it could go back to the policy committee. Or, I mean, also on these ones that we're going to be looking at, the rest of the board can be prepped and, okay, the policy committee is going to be looking at these three policies this, this meeting. So if you, so go ahead and look at these and if you have any questions or concerns, send those to Deb or to the chair of the policy committee so that they can be discussed in the meeting. But I don't think we want to get into where we're, we're doing policy in a school board meeting, because it's going to be very, very time consuming. I don't know if the superintendent has an opinion on any of that?
I do.
Yes. Go ahead.
It's a board philosophy on how you do business. A while back, the board decided to work through committees. You have a policy committee, a community engagement committee, these are, these are things you, you spent a lot of time talking about tonight. Therefore, I suggest that we continue to follow that philosophy until the board decides to change it. Stick with the board policy committee, the community engagement committee to do this heavy lifting. Have them focused, they can have deep conversations in those committees and then bring it back to the board and share what their findings are. That would be my suggestion.
And I agree with what you all have said and I just, I just want to make sure that you understand that I brought this to you to make you aware of the importance of owning those policies and the change that we're going to do in them. So as we leave this work to the policy committee to start, it is our responsibility, it is your responsibility to know those policies, to understand those policies, even before they come to you from the policy committee. And then when they come to you, then you can make better, we can all make better decisions and recommend our suggestions to the policy committee when they bring their suggestions, their recommendations. Yes, we're going to move on, so, but I'll let you talk. Director Bibi?
I appreciate the opportunity to make suggestions ahead of time to the committee and then I would like enough time, enough leeway, besides just the two business days and the weekend, to look at it. If I could make that recommendation. Because if you want to get back to someone, it's very difficult, I have found.
Yeah. Does that sound reasonable for the policy committee? Give more time, every time? That sounds great. Director Starks, I see you.
Okay, sorry. I just, I would actually broaden that request to a lot of things that we do, because I feel like that we see that often. So I know there's other boards that I've watched where they have something that comes and they learn about it, but they don't ever vote on it the night they learn about it. And then they, you know, so there's inherently a built-in week or two weeks into their decision making. So if we can look at it, not just from policy committee, but really anything that comes to the board, if, if it either always comes to a study session prior to a vote or, you know, the board meeting prior to, I know sometimes timing just doesn't make that possible, which I totally understand. But I think it could be helpful in multiple, multiple places, not just policy.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that, if it is possible for the administration, when it is possible, but also for us board members to understand and have the flexibility when, to also know that it's, sometimes it just cannot happen, that there are some items that come at the last minute for them as well. So let's keep that in mind, too. But yeah, if it's possible, then that will be good. Okay, so let's continue on focusing on our goals, our goal conversation. Is there anything else in regards to the goals? Now, we can go back. And anything else that you think that it's, that should be included or that we need to address or consider when it comes to board goals? No?
Well, the one I brought up earlier out of turn, I don't know if that's something we want to put in the goal, the right size in the budget 2.0, because that's going to be, that's going to be a lot of our work next year. And as we know, that was a lot of work this year, so I don't know if we want to include that in the goals or not. Superintendent?
Let Director Olson talk.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just going to say, if we, if we were to do that, maybe, you know, a lot of us are teachers, Tom, Nellie, Heather, and myself. And so educating the public, I would love to do this as soon as possible, is first, first educating the public on how our schools are funded, how our budget is funded and as far as a tutorial, that somebody can go online anytime, you know, easily, they can go on time, online. And I, I, you know, had reached out to Senator Wicklund and she said that she could be a part of that. And I know there's other, you know, and other people who are experts, Superintendent Fujitaki and Rod Zikovich and, and she even suggested a couple other people. And I'm thinking that if we can first have people understand, and that includes, you know, it's, it's been a lot to learn for me as a new school board member, how the district is funded. So I think that when people ask questions, and not everybody asks questions, but they just assume things and, and if they understand that, then, then they can better understand what you're talking about, you know, Director Bennett is, is, you know, then talk about how we're doing, when, you know, we're going to have to make budget cuts. So then they'll better, better understand why and how and maybe help prevent it, I don't know.
Okay, Director Steiger?
I just want to clarify, because we're talking about board goals and is this going to be work of the board and we're going to do that? Or is this what we're going to say is work of the district? And so we have to remember to separate that, you know, our goals are sometimes separate from the work we're going to do, we maybe put it in the superintendent's goals or how we decide this, you know, I'm just looking for feedback where, where we want to do this. So we want to make sure that we try to keep those separate.
Superintendent Fujitaki?
Okay, one of the board's responsibilities is to develop a financial plan that's aligned to the strategic plan. So that's, that's a given. In your draft goals, you have this section called, ensure that we will, we'll have a safe supportive schools plan, including culture proficiency that are reflected in the school board policies and merit in budget planning. This is going to be important as we go through right sizing of budget. This will be, this will help guide us in the tough decisions we have to make. If you're going to prioritize safe supportive schools, that has to be factored into the right sizing of budget process. And that's where the board comes in and that's where we're going to get guidance from the board, where we have to make difficult decisions. Does that make sense, everyone? That's how I see the right size, the role of the board and right size of the budget.
That's right.
But you're saying it's already in the goal, by that goal already is talking about the budget, so we don't have to add a separate right sizing of the budget goal, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
From, from the role of the, of the school board?
Yeah.
Yes. Director Bibi?
However, when I was reviewing the community engagement plan, this is one of the things we have to do, is responsibility of the board to educate the community on these, these things. That's what the plan says.
Yes.
And so I think what Maya is proposing is something we need to do and maybe it comes in the form, just like we're doing with letting families become aware about what's going to happen with the fall, what are the options for the fall? Going back on a digital, you know, platform, it's, it's important to provide something that people can go back to as well and reference if they need to and if they couldn't make the event when it was broadcast. But I really think that's a good idea.
Yeah. And, yeah, definitely. And once again, let's remember that we still have the community engagement component in our, in this, in those goals and that will be something that will go as part of this, of this component, I would, I would think, you know? I don't know if you agree with me on that one, but when it comes to reaching out to the public, even for information or any type of financial education, it's something that we can work on from that community engagement perspective and it's still part of the board goals. Good. Yes, let's go with Director Starks?
So you're asking for goal suggestions?
Any other?
Is that correct?
Yes, if you have any other suggestions.
So I have, I have a few, but I want other people to, you know, so I'll just maybe do one or two at first, but so, and, and these may be action items, not goals, so please stop me if that's the case, or they might fall under board or, or I mean, district or superintendent. So please stop me if I'm on the wrong track. So one of them was, I've been seeing some states, I haven't necessarily seen this in Minnesota much yet, that have been cutting gym band arts next year because of COVID. And so they're only just reducing their classes that are offered for students for distance learning or hybrid learning, just to the core subjects. So I'm wondering if we could have a goal or something that prioritizes and says, says that we will keep well-rounded education as a priority, even in our new reality. However, we may not even need to have that as a goal if it's not feasibly possible with our labor groups or if MDE wouldn't even let us. So it was just something, I have a response, because I'm watching it in other states. So I don't, I'm not even sure if it's necessarily needed in our environment, but I wanted to ask.
Yeah. And I don't know what other board members have to say, but remember, we also have a separate document that is right size in the budget document, where we specify the things that we will do or will not do, sort of the commitment type of goal. Any, anybody? Any comments on Director Starks coming? Director Bennett?
I think what you refer to there is the guiding change document, which is probably something we, we need to review before we get into right size in the budget conversation, which probably isn't part of the goals, but that's probably something we should be talking about early, like August, September, or something like that.
Is, is that something we might want to include in our, in our goals then, to take a look at that? No? Okay, I can see a lot of no's. Director Steiger?
I think it's just background information that we bring when we start working on the goals. It's materials that we gather, or I mean, when we start working on the goals, when we start working on the strategic plan, et cetera, et cetera, right size in the budget. It's all background material that we bring to that. But I just wanted to say, to the other thing that Director Stark said, I don't know, the state is going to decide all that for us anyway. So I don't know how it, we don't know what the goal could be, because we don't know what they're going to allow us to do at this point.
Yeah, true.
Yeah.
That's fair. Yep.
True. Director Bibi?
For another goal, when we were having our professional development today with MSBA, we were talking about the onboarding of new members and some of the things that I still need to know and they recommended some things that would be helpful. And so they actually said, well, maybe one of the things that would be helpful for your board with new board members is to create a process of onboarding new members with even a calendar of when certain decisions come together and then, you know, for example, board goals and then what's expected of, of the board members. And, you know, you get to, I can even just say as simple as graduation. It's like I had no idea what to expect, okay? Well, you're going to need to be down there at this time, you need to do all this. It'd be good to kind of have like a directory of different things, but to have a calendar to know, this is the time of year that we look at this, you know? This is the time we have to have our budget done by. I know we heard it verbally, but to have it written down helps to have a good reference point. And MSBA recommended that.
Director Bennett?
I think that would be a great idea. I don't know how we'd fit that in our goals, but that'd be something, it might be an action step. That might be something that the community engagement committee could work on, that they could put together a onboarding, whatever pamphlet for new board members. I don't know, I'm, if Dawn wants to think of that at all, or?
For example, for example, I'm, sorry, I just cut in there, but for example, I have never seen anything that tells me what the role of the chair is.
And what about MSBA? Sorry.
It was never in the teaching.
Beginning of the year.
Policy. We have an policy, actually.
Look at the definition, but even as a treasurer, until I went through that class, I had no idea. There's, there's not something specifically really written up. It's all very vague. And so, you know, I was having a conversation with Nellie today about something and it's like, you know, I just need to know more about what is the role of the chair, so that I can respect the role of the chair.
Director Olson?
Well, I just wanted to ask Director Bibi and Director Starks, because we were at this MSBA meeting together. I thought, am I wrong that they, that they said that they would put something together like that? That they would put something together about explaining what, does every school district do these things around the same time of year? You know, do, does every school district do board goals around the same time of the year and, and do right sizing the budget or whatever, these different things? They obviously do graduation around the same time of the year, so I didn't know if they were going to, they said that was a good idea, but I didn't know, I thought that they said they would do something like that.
They, oh, just myself. They said that they actually had somebody, I think it was somebody by the name of Gail, that was going to be doing something in August and talking about the role of the chair at that time. So.
But not putting together informational packet like you were suggesting? Okay. All, okay. All right.
Okay. What does everybody else think about having the mentor part included in our goals? Or any other opinions on that? Director Sorum, no? You would have a lot of, you know, historic background perspective on how the boards have done it through all those different years before we came.
Right. We've used Robert's Rules of Order and then there, there are the descriptions of all of the things. We have a couple of policies and there's some other documents around that talk about the role of the chair, the role of the vice chair, the secretary treasurer and different things like that. So all of that, we do have materials available for it. It's never, sorry, Beth, it never really came up in those meetings that all of a sudden somebody would say, well, what does the chair really do? You know, because that's all been explained at various times. And MSBA does a great job at putting together all those packages for, you know, superintendent contracts, superintendent evaluation, the role of the board, how we do things in various districts. And a lot of times our district. And a lot of times our district meetings that we have with being in the fourth district, that's when they cover a lot of these issues too. So maybe it's, I guess it's just, maybe it's up to us old timers who've gone through this so many times to take, you know, and that's the role of the tutor, typically the vice chair does play the role of the tutor and and their mentor and help with what might be some aspects of a board director and what's to be done with it, but.
I'm sorry, Director Bibi, I just want to say one thing. I have a family emergency here and my need to pass this meeting to Director Bennett. It's related to my dog. But just want to say that if we're talking about adding those these as a as a as a goal for or part of to be part of our list of goals. If if we need to look at, I don't know if we need to look at people within the board who would volunteer to be part of a a different committee. I don't know if it's even possible to form a committee of that, maybe a committee of three people within the board that will be willing to put all the different links and resources together to help new members as as they come into the board. So just want to leave it there. And I'm going to have to go, I'll probably come back, but I just want to make sure I help my husband because there's a situation with my dog right now. So Director Bennett, you are in charge. Sorry.
Oh, all right. Now that I'm in charge, kidding, yes, go ahead, Don, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that, you know, maybe I just can't remember, but I think that all of those things and all those definitions were all in MSBA material. And as Director Bennett said, in our policies and and those places. And Director Bennett helped me remember, there wasn't even, when we came on, were we even assigned anyone to us? I think we just came on and went to the classes, didn't we? I can't remember anything like that.
Yeah, it was a very different year. I mean, there were a lot of us that were new, but we were also using, you know, we're using Mr. Cheese Brown, who's doing a lot of professional development. So we were doing a lot more professional development for our first year. And there was also more MSBA professional development, like they, I think by this time we had already done, you know, phase three. But then he must be hasn't done the phase three yet, so. I think this kind of a different year, so I don't know.
Maybe some of the stuff is in the cheese brow stuff that I'm remembering too, that we could look for.
I think there's a lot of information on that. I don't know if we need to have district specific information on that. Maybe we do. Well. Yes, go ahead, Beth.
Well, as far as MSBA training, it there's fewer opportunities and they're farther in between. And I know that I tried to get in on the phase three and four one time, but I had a conflict with other things going on in the district, and so I couldn't. And then they're now going to do some things in the summer session that will address another question that we had today. But I've tried to take advantage of the times of teaching and I still have gaps. I have gone to the website from time to time to learn. But when you're coming in and you you're expecting, this is the organization I'm working with. And this organization needs to give me the direction for how their organization works. Robert's Rules of Order can be certain things, but how does it specifically relate to the school board? And if you had more professional development, then you probably had more opportunity to ask more questions. This year has been really consumed, that last year and this year consumed with a lot with the finances. And then just how abnormal the onboarding of these are. And they also, MSBA recommended a mentoring process. For example, having someone that checks in with that particular new member. Dick did a great job with this, where he would, he would call me ahead of time and ask if I had questions. He'd call me afterwards, comment on questions I had. And even even Jim, sitting next to Jim, a seasoned person was good because sometimes I would just write a question down on paper and shove it over to him and then, oh, okay, thanks, you know. And he we gave him after the meeting. And because we're not in meetings and we don't have those opportunities to ask or interact, it's definitely a hindrance in this particular time. But you're, you know, you're new and you're not sure what you don't know. And it's assumed that you know things or that you'll go to MSBA. And and at the, at at one point, you're just like, I'm just trying to get through the reading with the next meeting. So I understand it and that. So that's kind of where this comes from.
Well, I'm I'm going to think right now, we have mentors for our two newest members, Heather and Maya both have mentors, but I think we kind of missed the boat last year and we didn't provide you with the mentor that that. So I don't know if right now, if you think that, I mean, Jim's got nothing to do. He's got plenty of information and knowledge that he would be a wonderful mentor. I don't know if you would like him to be like an official mentor role to help you through the next year or something? If that would kind of solve some of the the problems? I don't know. Jim, do what do you think?
You've got, you've got a lot of ideas for others, Tom. Thank you very much for that. You know, as you as you've done some things, but it is something, you know, and I can appreciate Heather and Maya wanting to learn as much as they can the first six months. It takes two years at least, and MSBA will say that, two years at least to understand the styles, the personalities, the egos, the various administrative roles and capacities that they have. And not to try to learn too much, because then you get into a micromanaging approach that I have to have the answer to this. And and that's all within operations. Remember, we're here just to govern. So whatever information is provided, and we always look to administration to do it. As we've heard before, you know, you can talk to any administrator, principal, or whatever it might be to get answers to specific questions. But the general information, MSBA has done really well to do and holds these classes. And unfortunately, most of them are at St. Peter or way out in Brooklyn Center. So we are left out of being able to participate in some of that. But I'm always available to answer questions. And like I said, we've done so many different things over the many years that this is still a good thing to do is to help the new members learn how the interactions work without actually stepping in in the place of of administration and trying to do their jobs.
So, Don, you had your up, you, I'm sorry, you had your hand up?
I was just going to say one thing that that Deb is the administrative person for the school board. And she has the most wealth of knowledge possible. If you contact her, anytime you have a question, if she doesn't know what, she will find you the answer or send you to the person that can give you the answer. So you can always use her for a resource too.
Yeah, and I think that since in the next school year for where these goals will be, we're not going to have any school board elections, so we shouldn't have any new school board members. So this might be something that we look at putting on our goals next year, plan for board succession like we had last year. But I don't, that's just my take. I don't know what the the rest of the the board thinks. Should we maybe address this again next year? Is that a yes? Okay, yeah, go ahead, Beth.
My question is, we have two new board members right now who who need some direction.
I think the two new board members right now have mentors. I mean, I met, I'm Maya's mentor and then Donna's is Heather's. And I probably talked to both Maya and Heather hours every week. So I mean, I think they're getting the mentorship that that they they need. I'll probably let let them speak for themselves, but I don't know. What else do you two think you need?
And we're trying, we're trying to get the training. I mean, SBA is starting to do that, so hopefully that will help too.
Go ahead, Maya.
Okay. So here's the thing that I think Beth is trying to get at. Yes, we have you to ask questions about what's coming up, but we don't know what's coming up to ask questions of until that, like, like, yes, you say, okay, do you have any questions about the meeting tomorrow? That's great. That's helpful. But a handbook that says, you know, this is going to be in January, this is going to be in February, this is going to be in March, so that we could actually look ahead. And if there's something that we're not familiar with, or we have questions about, we could actually say, hey, I see this is coming up next month, or I see this is coming up in two months. And I really want to be prepared for that. Can you tell me what what our role is? So to have what she's suggesting is just a calendar and then we'll know the right questions to ask our mentors. Does that make sense?
Yeah, makes sense.
Because even the MSBA, sure, we can look up and say, oh, oh, the, you know, superintendent evaluation that's coming up. And then we can go look on the site and see what we're supposed to do, but we don't have a lot of time. And so so, you know, just having a calendar to know what's coming up. And of course, this past year, this, since we've been out in January, I mean, nothing has been probably, I mean, that that calendar probably wouldn't have even done any good, I suppose, because because we had so many unprecedented things happening and and that changed everything. So I understand, I understand that Heather and I were thrown into the deep end of the pool for.
Okay, go ahead, Don.
Oh. In fact, I just want.
Say, I don't, I don't see that as a board goal, though. I see that as, that's something that we can ask the administration to provide maybe a look ahead of the things that are coming up, kind of a summary. That's not necessarily a board goal. Deb is really the keeper of the calendar and when everything comes up and knows when everything has to be signed and when everything has to be done, she is the keeper of all of that for for all of us, plus the superintendents.
Yeah, Deb, you're right. Deb's a great resource and and we read about that, but.
So you you could ask her, though, for a for a calendar. The other thing I wanted to say, though, is when you say you don't know what to ask, but if you don't ask about things, we don't know what you don't know either.
I know.
You know, because because other people come in with different knowledge. And so we don't know that you don't know that. So sometimes you just have to ask because we have no idea that you don't know it.
I I think we're just, yeah, it's kind of like learn as you go here. And then and now, you know, the community wants you to to really know what you're doing because they're having a lot of questions and and they're going to with stuff. And and it's like, hey, I'm still learning my role here. But so I would like to add, my personal goal is just to make it through until the end of my term without getting an alter. That's my personal goal to add to this.
Okay, I I'm sorry, I I had to go away, so I cannot blast the thread of the conversation. But you you guys helped me through this as I continue to ask you. Director Bibi?
The fact that I'm bringing it up is because it was very prominent in our discussion today that there was a lot that is still not known. And when you talk about MSBA training, it was done differently when you had it. There has not been an opportunity for me to do phase three and four. I have gone to many different, you know, workshops on other things, but those things have not come up. And so I'm now two and a half years in. And you can, you said, well, we got, you know, three and four right after. Well, that would have been great for me, but that's not what happened. And with COVID, it's changed it as well. And I think what was discussed today was very important. And they picked up on it and they are recommending that for us. So it's not just our opinions and our experience, but they're definitely seeing a need for a better way to mentor and onboard. I'm just saying that.
Okay, I, it seems like we're still talking about the mentoring, adding the mentoring process to the to the document. So I'm kind of worried that we're we're kind of getting just stuck in one specific guidance. So maybe Director Bennett can give me some guidance on what we're doing here.
Well, I was hoping to hear from Lass and or Rick to see if they can how they've heard enough of what we're talking about, how we can incorporate that into our goals and how we can work on getting a a new board member guide. So I don't know if either of you want to speak to that at all? Whoever, Les or Rick, Rick?
I'll I'll start. One thing we need to do is, the request is, want to know what's coming up? We can give you a calendar. Deb and I have done this before. We can lay it all for you, what's coming up, the major items that, and there are going to be some significant major items. So I think it's going to be a worthwhile thing to do. The other thing is that it's showing that we need to do a better job onboarding and PD. We can, Deb and I can help out, so can Rick. We'll work on this thing with the chair to provide additional help to the new board members. Deb brought this thing up to me. We can, we can put in an extra effort to help out.
Yeah, and I also want to make sure that we acknowledge the work that Deb does because she helped us big, big way. And she really goes beyond, I I'm sure beyond of what her her role is in the in working directly with the board. And, you know, she also provides us calendars. We, when we accept the invitations, we get them in our calendar. And then she usually provides additional calendars ahead of time with the specific dates. You know, this is coming, this is going to happen, you know, plan for putting this in your calendar. So please, let's let's acknowledge the the great job that she does because she does.
That's true. I would, I would like to say that, yes, she she's excellent. And sometimes I forget that, oh, she's a resource that I can.
And and let's remember too, that it is our responsibility as individuals, board members, to dig through the information that we're needing. I mean, we are busy individuals, administration is very busy, they already have a lot on their plates. So let's take that into consideration as well. You know that if you need something, and that's the reason why we are members of Minnesota School Board Association. Anytime that you have a question or you need additional resources, please send them an email or grab the phone, give them a phone call, they are there to be of support as well. So please, let's remember that too. Okay, so are we done with that mentor conversation? Is that sound okay, what the superintendent said? Yeah.
Can I just say, I have one thing where you're talking about Deb and the and the calendar? She already puts things far ahead on there. If you scroll through the calendar, sometimes you can see them, but we could clearly get a list and have more detail of what some of those are for everyone too. But you, if you look ahead, you can see a lot of things that are coming up. They're already on there.
Yeah, that's true. Director Bibi? Director Bibi, your phone is, your microphone is up?
I think we're looking for more than just dates and the title of what's happening. We're thinking for what does that mean? And then what is going to be asked of us in making a decision? So we know what's coming. So we come prepared. And and what was discussed earlier, Nellie, is is that these things are all new, your first year. And even as other things come up, like contract negotiations, I will tell you that I went to a workshop with MSBA on the superintendent's evaluation. And because of how we do it, it was worthless. I went to a another workshop on contract negotiations. And it was, I went to one that was at the MSBA convention. And it was a couple hours long and it did nothing. I went to them, I said, I've got nothing here. I thought I would get more nuts and bolts. And then I went to the negotiation seminar and I got some things, but still the way that we do negotiations is very different from other districts. And so it still didn't help me. And so now I've walked through a negotiation and I've seen how it's done. And, you know, where there's challenges, what you counter and things like that. But I have to say that it was weak for our specific district. So we need some things within our district to prepare how we do it. This is a corporation different from others. This is a corporation different from others.
Yeah, I, I worry that we are, we have derailed from the initial purpose of the conversation, which the main focus was the goals. So if we can stick to that, please, and continue that. And we can have this type of conversation, maybe in a different setting or in a, in, in a different way. Um, but yeah, let, let's go back to where we were, if that's okay with you, Director Bibi. I think we understood now the need of, uh, maybe compiling some resources and finding different ways. And so I'll have further conversations with the superintendent um, to see what we can come up with and propose to the board. Okay? All right. Um, okay, so anything else in relation to those, those, those goals as, or as they are? Or are we good the way it is? It doesn't seem like it. Okay. Did I see a hand? It just, I, I don't know if it's me or if it's somebody that, and I see the, um, the screen freezing. So maybe that's me. It's me, right? It's a tough meeting for me tonight, it looks like.
It's not just you because I can't see Heather anymore either.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
Maybe it's me.
Some internal, okay.
Like, her camera was not on, but you guys could see.
Yeah, so can I just, under the 2020, 21 school planning, um, I'd like to propose something, and I don't know how to phrase this, but continuing to gather feedback from parents, students, teachers and staff to use it to inform future planning and changes. I've been really, I've really appreciated and, um, have valued that we've reached out in multiple times, multiple ways, for multiple reasons to be getting feedback. So I don't know if we could add that as part of the 2021 planning, that we just continue that same practice? That's probably a Mr. Kaufman question. So we've been, um, we've been very intentional about gathering feedback in many of the different, um, stages that we've gone through with planning, distance learning and such since March. And so I was wondering if we could, uh, add that as a goal to just continue that practice through 2021? Because the, the, the goal that we have right now is to be in compliance with MDH and MDE. But if we could add the continue to engage in feedback, I don't know. I'm just trying to figure out a way to, for us to continue valuing, valuing that, those voices when we make plans.
Yeah, you're telling me that my own response in terms of the COVID work will continue, we need to continue to do that um, from an operational perspective because it helps in developing our planning. Um, and as it continues to roll out, so let's maybe don't go back to traditional school. We have hybrid school, um, or some form, form of that. And the, and the new online school, it behooves us to have, to operationally have different forms of feedback to know that we are, we continue on the right track or what we have to fix. No different than like you just mentioned, Dr. Starks, that we had that with the distance learning surveys, um, periodically and communication surveys periodically. So, I mean, the board wants to make it a goal, um, or it's part of an operational, uh, strategy to go along with the current proposed goal.
Okay, well, if I'm hearing that it's more operational, then, then I'm fine letting it go. And, and then I strike out two for two, so I won't bring any more of my suggestions forward. Because I'm on the wrong track.
Drew water on the fire.
Director Steiger.
I would just like to say that I think we already have a pretty heavy lift on the goals we have on here. So unless there's something major, I would like to move on to getting to the rest of the, um, agenda.
That sounds good to me, Director Bennett.
Well, there's something else that I want to include. I don't know if we want to put it under board goals or superintendent goals, but something that I've been wanting for, for a while in this district is a, an all-district climate survey. So we're talking to teachers and, and pairs and bus drivers and students and parents and just finding out, you know, from employees, do they feel valued? Do they feel heard? You know, and ask those questions, you know, with their, do they feel valued by their teammates? Do they feel valued by their, their school administration, their district administration? Do they feel valued by the school board? And have some type of survey like that, some conducted sometime within the next year. So I don't know if we'd want that under board goals or superintendent goals or if that's more just a board directing administration to carry out a survey. So I don't know if any other board members feel the same way or if anyone else wants to speak to that.
Yeah, Mr. Kaufman.
Yeah, something, um, staff surveys are always good, um, periodically because they do give you some insights. I would just caution that in a pandemic, in the crisis that we're in, is the worst time to do a staff survey. You're going to get a skewed response and Dr. Heist, I think we probably best, better answered, but, um, historically, when we've done that in previous districts around, uh, a crisis, the data becomes very skewed. Uh, when we looked at it a year later, did another survey very similar to that. So, um, it's often, as you know, surveys are driven by, a lot of it is emotions and personal experience. And right now, people are struggling with the pandemic and, uh, the frankly, the, uh, racial unrest, not only in the state, but across the country. So I would, uh, uh, Mr. Bennett, if you, if it's okay with you, I would recommend that we revisit this next spring to see where we are and maybe a time when it, it may be a good time to do it at that point. But I, I think we're going to continue to do surveys around all this that we're doing and we are getting some pretty good insights as Dr. Heist has shared and as our, um, data from the staff survey that we did on the return to school, um, we've been working with the university, uh, to look at those open-ended responses from staff and based on the emotions that people have. And I'll be putting together an executive summary to share with the board on that as well.
Okay. Anyone else have any concerns about that?
Okay.
I agree with Rick. And, um, I also agree with Tom. Um, I think the timing is, is of essence, um, not to do it during the pandemic, but I think it would be a good thing to do down the road, once things come to a more, um, near normal, whatever that might be.
Okay. Director Starks.
Um, there we go. In, in one of the surveys, do I remember, was, was there a question for staff about if they felt supported by their administration? So maybe we can't do a full-on climate survey like Dr. Bennett mentioned, but potentially maybe we just ask that some of those questions continue to be in the surveys that we do, do, do do? Um, you know, do you feel supported? Do you feel, um, I don't know what I'm trying to say, but I'm, I can't wordsmith surveys, but, um, maybe we can get part of what we're looking for. Because I, I would love to have seen a climate survey. I don't know when the last time we, is that we did one in our district. So, so that's unfortunate that any data we have is quite old. So it would be nice to have fresh data. So I recognize that the timing might be wrong, but maybe we can find a way to still get it in, in other ways.
Yeah, the last one we did, Dr. Starks recommended, was when, uh, Bruce Pappas was the HR director. Um, we did a, um, pretty significant staff survey, um, I don't know what Mr. Bennett is talking about. And again, it, it's one of those, if, when, when we, whatever, when we do the next one, I'm not sure if that can be compared to that, that data from then. A lot has changed.
Yeah, and I don't know if, when we do a, a climate survey, if that's something that will be going into the either board goals or superintendent goals, if it's necessary. What do you think, Mr. Kaufman?
Well, again, I think anytime you do a survey, you've got two things. Be careful what you ask for and know that if you're asking the question, um, what are you going to do with the results and not just share it? So when you're doing a survey, it's intended to make changes, make improvements or, um, uh, you know, restructure. It's, it's not just asking how people feel, um, which is one aspect of it, but what are you going to do with it? Because people that take time to complete a survey is intended to do something with it. So if you're going to, we're going to ask, we need to know and be ready for the feedback and what we're going to do with it, whether, whether it's for goals or operations or, or evaluations. Um, there's, there's got to be a real specific purpose behind a survey.
Okay. All right. Well, okay, so it seems like we're, we're in agreement that this is not the time to do it, but that we, we will revisit that idea later on. Okay. Okay, let's see, anyone else? Let's then, um, finalize this first item. I think we're, I think we're done with that, right, Superintendent?
Could we post the notes and make sure that everybody agrees what we're going to do? So come Monday, there's no breakdown in communication expectations. You don't mind? Deb, can you post? Could you put up the board goals? Yeah, great.
Right.
Can everybody see that? Is it large enough where we see just, um?
Could you make it, could you make it a little bigger?
Hey, can we make it a little bigger? I'll see if I can.
There you go.
Okay.
That's better.
Does that help, Beth? Can you see it? Great. Okay, I'll walk everybody through this quickly. Uh, the session's being recorded, so we can refer back to the recordings. Okay, but the next steps is, administration will work with the chair, will edit the, the document and based on the red notes in this, on based on the red notes. Okay, so follow along because we're going to do the editing based on the red notes. And then tomorrow, we'll agree with the chair by, by the afternoon. The chair will deliver the revised draft to the board tomorrow evening. This is just my suggestion on the process for the board's review and comment. The board to give feedback on the revised draft to the chair by Sunday afternoon. So then the chair has time to process everybody's feedback and the chair will work with us again on Monday. And hopefully by noon, we'll have it finalized. Okay, so that's, that's my suggested process. Anybody have any objections? Hearing none, I'm going to move on. The first bullet, governance and policy. The red notes say, we're going to propose to the board an action for process and timeline for refreshing the strategic plan. It's going to be a process step by step of what we're going to do and it's subject to board approval. And, but this process is not part of this goal statement, okay? But we'll have a separate document on that process. Moving down the framework, we're going to reword that as Director Stark said, to clarify the dates. And administration will draft another document, a separate document on a process for establishing and reporting metrics and progress to the board. That's what, that was a request, I think, by Director Sorel. Moving on down to vision. We're going to clarify the definition for supported district-wide. There are several suggestions. I'll work with the chair on this. Okay, and I tried to capture all the suggestions and we'll, we understand what the board wants. At least I do. I think I do. Next is assuring safe supportive school culture. What, this was a question by the chair. Do you work as a committee as a whole or the policy committee? My consensus at the end was that we work as currently. The board policy committee will do the work to take the full board. I want to be clear on that. Next thing is this philosophy about doing business. I covered that. Uh, and then there was a suggestion in yellow. Board members should be, uh, should be given the opportunity to give input before the policy committee meets. And then the board should be given ample time to review the work of the policy committee before it becomes, before it comes to the board for action. Now, those are, those are not hard dates. So the board policy committee is going to have to come up with how much time they need before, how much time they need after to process, okay? That's the work of the policy committee. Next thing is curriculum alignment. There was a question about who gets to review it. As Dr. Mitchler said, there's a whole process and we need to share that process with the board. But that process is largely covered in the board policy, uh, it's board's policy committee, a curriculum review. So we'll cover that with the board to, here's a step-by-step process. And as all of you know, there's a pathway advisory committee and they're part of the team. Board members are on it, teachers are on it, lots of, lots of eyes get on curriculum alignment work. Okay? Any questions? Stop me now. If anybody disagrees with my notes, let me know. Operational oversight. Uh, add the reason for adding this, um, safe supportive schools to the metrics, okay? As a multiple metric. So we need to work on that. Some suggested language was, is there in red? Next thing on school planning, they wanted a stronger verb for review. What is the purpose for reviewing? Somebody had, in coordination with administration, in light of COVID, will come up with language, working with the chair. It doesn't change the intent of this goal. It's just they wanted more meat to the thing, more action to this goal statement. Next on community engagement, I want to emphasize again, we have a board policy committee. We have a board community engagement committee. The plan of that committee needs, should be updated based upon all the discussions that took place tonight. Uh, they talked about, the goal needs to strengthen and give notice to people historically not engaged. That is, that to me is the work of the community engagement committee to go out and recruit, identify, help these groups be successful. And they've already started that. Like somebody pointed out, these groups are doing a good work. We just have to be there to support them and help them continue to do great work for us and show that we care and we're engaged. And that's the work of the policy committee. And, uh, and Heather said, no decision about us without us. And that's something that we can, the policy, the community engagement committee can work on. And then we did, then we went on to, how do we measure this thing about, uh, we'll model the words and actions. That's the board's role. And should it be a mission statement of the board? How do we measure this? Need metrics? I suggest as part of board self-evaluation. The boards are the parents of the school, of this district family. You set the values, you set the behavior in action. People are watching how you behave. And when you model this kind of behavior, it shapes the organizational culture. All of you know this, just like parents of a family, the behaviors of the parent shapes the culture of that family. And that's why I think this is an important metric. And it's hard to come up with quantifiable data, but it's really self, self-evaluation. You, you look at each other and you have a kindly conversation about how you're coming across to people. Are you following those values? So that's my suggestion of that. I, I like this, I like that. It really has the board reflect annually, at least once a year, when you do the self-evaluation, if they're living up to this and they are leading and shaping the culture, organizational culture of the district. And then moving on, then I had a list of, and everybody needs to remember, we're a learning institution. Everybody needs to invest themselves. You're all professionals and the definition of professionals is when you self-improve. You continue to try to improve yourself. All of you do that. We can help, administration, Beth, Deb and I, and others can help with that work. So, and I, I'm concerned about this discussion about the new board members not feeling equipped to make informed decisions and take informed positions. And we need to do a better job because we have all the elements of a, of a good team. We have a good leader, we have good goals, we have a great plan. And we have great values. We talked about behavior, safe supportive schools. It's this thing about the individual team members feeling like they're qualified or competent to do their respective jobs and we need to help them so they feel comfortable doing their work. Because it's a team effort. Everybody follow that? That's part of our job. So that's why Deb and I need to help out and so does everyone else. The board members are helping out, we can help out too. Now, I don't think I can give you a calendar, like I said, with all the specifics, like what's going to happen. We come up with these major events and if you don't understand what that major event process is, please ask us and we will be happy to explain it to you. But for me to just outline what that event is going to be, I don't have the capacity to do that. So if you can help us out by telling us, look at this calendar, I don't understand what the process is, we'll be happy to share that with you. So, um, and that's it, I think. So that concludes it. If, so if we deliver this- So, and that's it, I think. So that concludes it. So if we deliver this, everybody's okay with that as an expectation? I see head nodding. Chair, I'll turn it back to you.
Yeah, Superintendent, oh, stop it right there, that please, and go down, please, to the part of the policy committee that does highlighted that one. It says board members to give input to the policy committee, but if we're going to continue to do, or if the, if the policy committee is going to continue to work in the same way that they have been doing it for the last years, then I guess to give input, it does not apply. It will be they, they meet, they work together, and then they send this information to the rest of the board. And then the board provides input based on their findings. Because otherwise it becomes the, the, the work of everyone versus the, the work of the policy committee. Do you know what I mean? I see, I see Tom Bennett shaking his hand, his head. But what I'm trying to say is you continue doing the work the same way you have been doing it, except that you now provide more time before they come for approval to the board during the board meeting. For, for the rest of the board members to like take a look at. So, yeah. Director Bennett?
Um, yeah, I was just thinking that it wouldn't be a bad idea to let the rest of the board know which policies that we're going to be reviewing on that session. And if any board members had any questions or concerns, to give those to you know, the chair of the committee or to Deb, just so that when we're in that policy committee meeting, we can kind of address those and say, well, board member, you know, BB had these concerns, or the chair had these concerns, and we can kind of address them in the meeting. I don't think you would add a lot of time in our committee meetings. I think it'd be something that would be beneficial.
Well, that, that's what I mean, that they don't, the board, because the way it was reading was the board members were sent input to the committee before the committee meets, meets. But the, the reality is you're going to be meeting first, looking into the, the policies, and then you send this to the, to the.
No, but I'm saying they should know before we meet what we're going to be meeting on. Because it's kind of hard for them to say after, after we meet and then say, well, these are the policies we revised. Then it's kind of late for them to give any input because we've already met. So that's why I was saying it might be good just to give them that opportunity if they have any questions or concerns to.
Okay, I don't know. I don't know how the rest of the committee will feel about that. So please, please. Director.
Well, I was just going to say that we already know what, we already know what they are right now. We know what policies we're going to go over. So we can, what about just, you know, I mean, we can look at those ahead of time and then, and then if we have questions about them, we can send them to the policy committee. Can we do that?
Yeah, definitely. Okay, Director Sorum says yes. Okay, very good. And Director Starks, good. All right. So I guess we're done with this first item in the agenda. Correct? Looks like everybody's okay with the rest of the document and what Superintendent read, went over, through and explained. Very good. So yes, please send that, send your, your feedback and time like Sunday or early, early Monday morning, please. Okay? All right. Okay. So the next item in the agenda is the superintendent goals. And my question would be for the superintendent. Yeah, what would you like to say about this superintendent? Any suggestions, recommendations now that you have seen the, the work of, of the first item of the board goals?
Not that the board has established their goals, I need to establish my goals that align with their goals. And then I also need to receive additional feedback on what are the goals they would like to, for me to consider. So a suggested process, it's getting, you know, it's getting long, the meeting is getting long. And I need to process all this information and come up with goals. But I, I would like to give you an idea of what I have in mind for goals to align with your goals. This is going to be heavy lifting this area, but no, no doubt. The preparing for school this fall. In fact, we have to prepare for three types of schools this fall, and all of you know this. Traditional, hybrid and distance learning. Plus, we are, we're also starting an online school program. Where I just met today with about 15 superintendents. They're just starting their work, everyone. It's surprising. They're just beginning. But at the same time, we don't have much of a runway, and this is going to be, no matter what we come up with this fall, there, there's going to be drama. People are not going to be happy with, there's going to be a section, a component of a population that's not going to be happy with whatever we come up with. And it's going to be reflected on all of us. We're going to do our best, but for kids and for staff. But all of you know this, it's not going to be, and it could twist quickly because if there's a spike in COVID. So that's going to be a lot of work. And I see preparing for the opening of school and preparing with plans so we can pivot quickly for changing conditions, guidelines, executive orders is going to be key. So that would be one of my goals. I worded it better than that. The next thing is right sizing the budget too. All of you need to realize, we have negotiations, we've got this startup of school, all this social unrest, and we've got a legislative process that's going to be one of the most challenging ones in the past, I don't know how many years. They're, they're not going to have money. They're going to be, they're going to look at clawing back monies because they have to balance the budget. And I hope they don't call back specialized fundings for certain districts because we're one of the districts to get, that enjoys specialized funding because of our diversity and our size and other things. We need to be ready. We need to be at the capital campaigning with them because if we don't speak up, people are going to be desperate. So that's the kind of work that's in place. And I bring up all this because right sizing the budget, I have concerns, everyone, on the mental health of this district. When we bring up right sizing the budget. Last time we talked about this, we came out late because we wanted to wait till after election last year. It was a, it was a choice we made. Didn't give much time for the community to respond. You haven't enough time for the board members to process. We talked about giving board the community engage in August. Just before the start of school, we'll talk about $2.5 million in cuts. I know it's, we have to talk about it, but I like to get schools started first and hopefully off to a good start in September and maybe do an early October conversation with the community. But then again, this is up to the school board because it's their call on right sizing a budget. We just make the recommendations. But that's a, that's another conversation we have a little time to process. At the same time, I am concerned. So I have been working with the state and with others. I'm going to say, I'm trying to, I am in the process of developing a proposal where we may not have to cut as much as we had talked before. Okay, and if we can reduce the amount of cuts, it's, I hope to have that proposal sometime. What's this one? Maybe, maybe beginning of August, I'll have that proposal on how to do this. It's going to be a big rabbit if we pull it out, guys, but if, if we can just minimize the drama, we have all these other issues in front of us. It'll be great for the community, great for our staff. That's, so that, that'll be one of my goals is to come up with this way of at least minimizing, reducing the size of the RSB two and hopefully pushing it off without impairing our fund balances. Okay, anybody can spend on the fund balances if you're afraid. I'm trying not to do that. So that would be another goal that I'd write up. So those are the three big ones. Prepare school, right size of the budget negotiations. This social unrest, we need to get prepared. I'm glad we're doing this, all this work about safe and supportive schools. And the legislature, the community engagement, we all need to do this fall, though this spring, we'll be at the legislature. It's going to be key. There's going to be so many voices there. We need to really have a aggressive campaign. So, and, and all the other things, I just need to line up the other goals with your goals. And I hope to have that document ready for the chair tomorrow. I, I should be able to draft it up tonight. Get it ready for tomorrow. And so then when we write up the board goal, we'll come up with this. Now, I don't expect the board to be ready to approve that on Monday night. There's probably going to be more processing. And I suggest that if you can give the board your input, the chair your input for additional goals, that's my suggestion. And then she can process that and then distill it down and then we can have a discussion. So I'll turn it back to you, Chair Corn.
Yeah, thank you, Superintendent. So yes, please send all your ideas for superintendent goals that you would like to propose and send them directly to me so that I can compile them in one document. Okay, any other comments, additional comments or questions? We will be working on superintendent. So I will ask you to, let's, let's wait until we have that conversation during the, the time when we come back for the superintendent goals. But yeah, Director Sorum.
Uh, yeah, I just want to thank you. And, and as you mentioned that and realizing what a road to walk upon as we go down. And we still haven't talked about the planning with Andy Kubis and his whole team, you know, about the nature of it all. The fact that we're going to have those free options for the school and maybe an online school now. That online school might be from the high school or whatever it is. It's not going to be a particular building, is it? And I know all of this is going to be addressed, you know, later on, be before like July 13th or something, before we have the big meeting on the 14th. But I guess the curious question is, we're not going to be working with another building for an online school, are we?
No, we're not. You mean a bricks and mortar building?
Yeah.
No, we, we're not.
No. That would be an additional cost. We certainly won't want to do, but otherwise just compliments to the whole crew that are, are doing so much now already.
Okay, thank you, Director Solomon. Thank you for bringing up that question because I know that those, those are also comments that might be circulating within our community. So it's always good to clarify. Yeah, thank you. Director Bennett?
Yeah, just to clarify the, the process. So we're going to approve our board goals on Monday, but not the superintendent goals. But if we have ideas or superintendent goals, we give those to you. So then when would we as a board be able to come back and discuss that together, those different superintendent goal ideas?
We have a tentative hold for a study session on the 13th of July. And that is just in, yeah, we're holding it just in case there are major changes and we reconvene the, we'd have that study session to share with you what we plan to share with the public the next day on the 14th. As far as fall planning. So we could keep that date and have that discussion there.
Okay, and then we would probably then vote for those at our first meeting in August, I would assume? Okay, all right. Just wanted to make sure we're all clear on the process. Thank you.
Yeah, but please make sure you send those to me. Okay, let's propose goals. Okay. Anything else? No? Well, thank you, everyone. Let's keep in mind the, the commitment we're making here today are the goals that we are proposing and, and, and the work that we have ahead of us. And let's stay here in focus. Thank you. I hope you have a good weekend. Thanks, everyone. Thank you. Bye.